Hey. Welcome to Grassroots Ohio, conversations with everyday people working on important issues here in Columbus and all around Ohio. I'm Carolyn Harding, and today I'm talking with Adrian Hood, Columbus City Council candidate on the November 7, 2023 ballot. Adrian Hood is a mother of three and has four grandchildren. She retired from the U.S. Air Force in 2020 as a Master Sergeant and is a Columbus native who grew up in Linden. And Adrian graduated from Columbus City Schools and has her bachelor's in Criminal Justice Administration and her master's in Human Services. A servant leader at her corps, she serves in her church and has served on several grassroots boards over the years. Adrian is passionate about the changes that need to take place in our city, which will protect everyone regardless of their zip code. She is most passionate about public safety, mental health care, affordable housing, and public education. Adrian Hood for Columbus City Council is endorsed by Elect Black Women, New Politics, New Power, Our Revolution Ohio, Moms Demand Action Gun Sense Candidate, and The Matriots. Welcome, Adrian.
Thank you for having me, and also an endorsement from the Work and Family Party as well.
Excellent. Well, your campaign is in the final stretch, less than two weeks to Election Day, although early voting is going on right now as we speak. If elected Columbus City Council member, what will you do first for the people of Columbus?
So what I would do first, obviously, you explained my, the things that I'm most passionate about around public safety, mental health care, affordable housing, and public education. But I really think that it's important for me to get in and get an understanding of how things actually operate and then start honing in on the things that I want to see in the public safety. You know, as far as public safety is concerned, as far as mental health is concerned, as far as affordable housing and what we do and contribute to as far as public education, getting myself familiar with those areas. And then having a plan of execution. And in that, including the relationship with grassroots organizations. Because I think it is very important to have the relationships with the ones that are actually out here doing the work day in and day out, who get, you know, very little support and especially very little financial support. So definitely wanting to build those relationships so that we can have plans going forward that are definitely going to benefit a bigger part of our community instead of just a select few.
You are endorsed by Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense. Talk about your vision and action plan for Columbus regarding gun sense.
Oui, it's so much that we can, you know, that we can do around gun sense laws, even, you know, having background checks. I don't know why that has become such a sticking point for, you know, around gun sense, having gun sense laws. It's not the worst thing. Most of us have had to go through some kind of background check to get our job. So why that's become a sticking point, you know, for the other side, just, it just really baffles, baffles me. But I think that, you know, background checks is definitely something that we could, that we should be doing, right? That we have a moral responsibility to do to make sure that guns are not getting in the hands of the people that don't, that don't need them. And I know there's some of the pushback has been around the people that, the ones that have the guns illegally. You know, that they don't have to worry about background checks because they're getting the guns illegally. Well, that's another conversation to be had as well. Where are the guns coming from? Where are the, the big amount of guns coming from? They're not coming from your Irish citizens. And so we need to, you know, we need to hone in on that as well if we really want to have a conversation about changing, you know, around who has access to guns in our community.
All right. Do these buyback programs work? I know Mayor Ginther did it for a while. What, what do you think about that?
Oh, well, the interesting thing that I, that I have learned is the buyback programs, it's usually people that are, that are coming and selling their guns back are not the ones that we don't need to have the guns. They're not going to show up for the gun buyback, right? So while we're getting guns, you know, that someone may have laying around haphazardly, right? Yes, that's a good thing. But when we are talking about gun violence in the community, those are not going to be the members that are coming and selling their guns. And quite honestly, if they are, they're only going to go get a bigger or better gun. That's the reality of it.
So state preemption laws at the State House have taken away our local control at a city level on gun control, you know, any kind of gun control, rent control, minimum wage, oil and gas production waste disposal. And right now, there's even a bipartisan effort to create a ban on cities adopting ranked choice voting on their, in the way they vote. What will you do as a council member to support home rule or local control in Columbus?
Well, there's so, there's so many things in that, in that question, Carolyn. You know, I, I think that one of the things that we must get better at as a community, as elected officials, the thing that we must get better at is having, having a plan on top of a plan. You know, we have a plan of execution and we expect for things to go one particular way, right? And when it doesn't, we spend a lot of time, you know, kind of picking ourselves back up instead of proactively thinking, thinking through, you know, well, if we submit or introduce this type of legislation, there may be this kind of pushback or there, you know, case in point with the preemptive, you know, the law that they came up with to basically keep the, the, the local cities from being able to do what they need to as far as gun violence is concerned or, or, you know, or violence is concerned. Having, knowing who we are going up against, right? Knowing who we are going up against, having a plan of execution, when this doesn't work, what are we doing next? Like, we should already have that in line. Because what I have noticed and learned as I continue to be involved in, in policy and learning more about policy, the other side very, very does this very, very well. They're playing 10, 15, 20 years out.
Yes, they are.
And we are always reacting. We have to get a proactive mission, right? And, and bring in as many people as we can to be, you know, on one page. It doesn't mean that we're going to operate in a silo. It doesn't mean that there's a monolith, monolith amongst any of us, right? But we, we have to have enough of us in the space, knowing that we are going in the same direction and have that plan of execution. I feel like we do a lot of reactionary type, you know, legislation and introduce, introduction of legislation. And like I said, the other side does very well. They're, they're playing, you know, this, when, when this comes up, they already have X, Y, Z as a next move. And we, I, I feel like we need to get better at that.
How has your experience as a vet impacted your run for the people of Columbus?
Interestingly enough, I'm glad you asked that question because yesterday there was a gentleman that was coming, coming to vote. And he got out of his car, you know, we were asking him, they were asking, did he want the sample ballot? He didn't want the sample ballot. And I said, you know, I have some wordlet that for your consideration, we're not going to be on the sample ballot. And he just kind of threw his hand up and, you know, I'm okay, right? And so I looked at his tag and his tags, he had a Purple Heart tag. And I said, hmm, well, I can't go in, right? Because we can't go within 100 feet of, you know, of the door. I mean, he was, he was parked inside of, of that particular zone. And I said, "A veteran for you to consider, Adrian Hood." And I just left it at that. You know, I walked away and was talking to some other people. And I didn't even see him come out, you know, see him and his wife come back out. And so I was standing there talking and I just heard this, how he said my last name. It was something that you understand when you're military. And I turned around and I looked and it was him and he did just like this.
Thumbs up, huh?
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, it's a, that, that relationship is so near and dear, right? And, and oftentimes regardless as to what side of the, of the owl, you know, as they say, there's someone sits on that piece right there, you know, is near and dear to a lot of us, right? Because we know the sacrifice that, you know, that, that has been made, continues to be made. And so it was, it was awesome to, to have that opportunity because, you know, at first I thought, wow, he won't even, you know, come over. And though when I seen that purple heart, I said, I, I have to take advantage of the opportunity. And, and I said something and, and he listened.
He made that connection?
Yes.
Talk about the needs of mental health care in Columbus, Adrian.
Oh, boy. It's, 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 I, I hear and see so many, you know, people's stories and, and they're struggling with mental health. The one that obviously is going to be near and dear to me is because of my story, when I see someone have a mental health crisis and then they are harmed by someone, you know, within our police department or a police department. So with that, I think that it is very important for us to really get intentional around the non-police response. The non-police response team for those who are having a mental health crisis so that we can keep our members of our community as safe as possible, right? And, and then, you know, beyond that, I think that it is very important for us to figure out a better way of communicating the resources that, that Columbus does have available, that Franklin County does have available for mental health. You know, for those suffering with mental health crisis. Because oftentimes, people just don't know. And, and I think that anymore, especially in the space of technology, you know, it's, it's so much easier, it's so much more convenient for us to, you know, push a button on our phone and, and send out a, a post or a flyer, you know, on, on the internet. But everybody doesn't use it that way. And many people that need the resources probably aren't there, right? So I think that it is very important for us to still send stuff in the mail. It's still important for us to knock on people's doors. It's important for us to have events in the community that are expressing what resources are available and not just, not just telling the community what resources are available, but having those resources be available when those community events are happening. I think is just as, just as important. I know that it happens sometimes. We have Stop the Violence marches, you know, in Linden. We just had our last one on the 16th of October. But we have, you know, different organizations have come and partnered and bring out their information. And as we're going knocking, you know, walking through the neighborhood and giving out information to families as they open the door to see what this big crowd of people is walking down their street. So it gives us the opportunity to engage with the community, but that's something that needs to be ongoing, right? And, and, and make sure that, that people know that there are services that are available. And for, again, the importance of grassroots organizations and the ones that are actually getting in the trenches with our most vulnerable, for them to be supported, you know, not just by, by lip service or not having to have them, have to go to bigger organizations who may or may not, you know, want to support them. We need to make that access to dollars easier because they are the ones that are out there making the sacrifices to help in that space.
You have a bachelor's in Criminal Justice Administration and a master's in Human Services. You've had access and ability to get good education. Where are we right now in educating our youth, our future workforce and leaders in Columbus? What's your vision and commitment to public education?
Public education. As you read in my bio, I graduated from Columbus City Schools. So obviously, it's, you know, it's very important because everybody can't afford to, you know, to send their child to, you know, to private school. Thankfully, by way of our dear friend, Joe Motil, I have learned so much about tax abatements. And as I learn even more, I think about the things that weren't available even when I was in school and how much more those things are not available, you know, even now. And so with that, you know, being the case, I think that we have to get very intentional about, you know, who we allow to come into our communities and, and get abatements because they do and they can fund our schools in, in big ways. And many of our schools, not just any one particular or, you know, a couple of different schools. Those are dollars that can go back into our schools. And then we can bring back some of the programming that's, you know, been cut because arts went, you know, and continues to decrease. All of our kids, the reality is they are not going to college. Some can afford it, some don't want the debt, and then some are just more hands-on. They need something that they are doing with their hands, right? When I was in, in schools, we had the career centers and they were on all sides of towns and they cover so many different, so many different trades, right? And, and, and us having the proper funding can help restore some of that. And that, to me, plays a very integral part in us, in us giving our kids something to do and to look forward to, right? And so when you can see where you're going, idle time becomes less because I have a focus.
So with the mention of the tax abatements and the money being taken away from Columbus Public Schools, right now there's a levy on the, on the ballot. And, and different communities feel very differently about this levy. What are you, what are you hearing and what do you, what was your take?
I, I understand that the, I understand that the levy, you know, will, will be important for our schools. I understand that. And I also understand the concern of some of these organizations. And I understand the burden for, for those who are barely getting by now. You know, our elders, we have to think about, you know, as well because they're on a fixed income. And for every hundred thousand dollar, a hundred thousand dollars of a home, you know, that's the potential of high, like, close to 200 or more dollars being added, you know, in taxes. So the concerns are, 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 are real, you know? And, and that's to, you know, that's to be respected. I can't speak for someone else's house and, you know, and, and, and what they have in their home as far as their finances are concerned. So I absolutely get it. And at the same time, I understand, you know, that our, that our babies need, need the, the things that they need at school as well. And so I personally, I believe that, that this decision is going to come down to a very individual decision, much like issue one, right? It, it's, it's, it's going to come down to a very personal, I have to make this decision for myself and, and my household. You know, and my family. Because people do still have to survive, you know? So, so I get it. I get it on both sides. I absolutely understand.
Okay, so we'll segue right into that, that state issue, issue one, because you, you come from a very religious commitment. And I don't know, in your community, how many people support reproductive rights? But you have come out supporting issue one. Would you like to talk about that?
Oh, absolutely. So issue one is very, is very personal to me. And at the same time, I don't have a problem, you know, in, in sharing, you know, a part of, you know, a part of my story. You know, at one point in time, and I was a teenager, you know, and I had an abortion, right? And it wasn't necessarily by choice, but it is, it, it's my reality, right? So I would not, would not tell somebody else what to do when it comes to that decision. As you stated, I am very, very, very passionate about my God. I absolutely am. But I also know that I serve a very forgiving God at the same time, right? And so where, where I have made peace with my decision and being okay with my decision is when I see my Heavenly Father, I won't hold an account for anyone else's decisions but my own. And such is the same for someone else, right? And, and even, even in that, I serve a God that gives choice. I do, right? And so, so I, you know, I, I just personally believe that that is a very personal, individual decision that each person is going to have to, you know, is going to have to make. Regardless as to whether, you know, you consider yourself to be spiritual or not. That, that's a very private, I just think that it's private. Some things are just meant to be left private.
I agree. And I would like to segue into the concept of separation of church and state. There's a lot of very right-wing religious folks that are legislating their religious beliefs. And I'm very aware of it, wary of that not being religious and having friends of all faiths and no faiths. And it's a maxim of our country to separate church and state. How, how will you deal with that as a city council member?
When I am, when I am in the public place and I am serving the public, that's what I'm doing. I'm serving the public, so I can't just take my thoughts into consideration when I am in the role of being a public servant. I have to take in consideration of all the, all of the people that I serve, right? And be open to having conversations, right? And be open to even when, when there are tough decisions that need to be made, whatever that is. Wherever, you know, that may land, being able to communicate why it is that, you know, that I decide or someone else decides. Being able to communicate that, I think, is the most important thing. Sitting down and having a conversation with someone is something that, that is necessary and it's the right thing to do. But when I am in the role of a public servant, it's just that. So I have to think about the people that I am serving.
Okay. Another thing that you are, you said you're concerned about is affordable housing and the homeless or houseless folks that we have here in Columbus. What is your vision and what's your commitment for this issue?
Yeah, so definitely, you know, I hate to bring Mr. Joe's name up here, but, you know, I, I'm learning so much, you know, from him, even around that, 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 that particular topic. I live up here off of 161. There's a lot of hotels that have been shut down, you know, for being nuisance and whatnot. And though I don't know the specific ins and outs of how we would be able to obtain some of those, those hotels and turn them into temporary or transitional housing and, and making sure that, that there are other agencies there to serve in the capacities that need to, you know, that individuals need because there, they might, there may be mental health situations, right? There are a lot of veterans that are houseless. There are some people who just cannot afford to live in Columbus anymore. Just out of curiosity, I was looking up apartments to see how much they were, right? Because I get phone calls every day for my house, you know? And it's so annoying. I wish that I could block them permanently, but unfortunately I can't because somebody sells list. But that's another conversation. You know, but, but seeing how we could open up spaces, you know, to be of more, to, to be more of a service in those, in those ways. I, I think that that's a, that's a conversation to be had and, and not just be talking about it and not just say that that's a great idea. We really need to be executing when it comes to this, to this manner. Because, you know, like I said, the apartment that I looked at, 586 square feet for $1,200 a month is absolutely ridiculous. And somebody that is making $15 an hour because the city did change their minimum wage for city employees to $15 an hour. But even that, for someone, they would not be able to afford. That, that paying their rent would be their pay, would be their, their income for the month, right? And so we, we have to do something about that.
Ms. Hood, where can folks get information and sign up to help your campaign?
Sure. Thank you for asking. So my website is adrianhood.com, my name and .com. My social media handles are hoodforcols, that's H-O-O-D-F-O-R-C-O-L-S. And that's on Instagram and on Facebook. I try with Twitter, but I'm just not the greatest at Twitter, so I'm going to stay in my lane.
So what's your, we have like 30 seconds. What's your call to action for the people that are listening to this interview today?
My call to action for those listening is don't just use the sample ballot. Do your research on each candidate. The ones that you feel that you can support, vote for them. The ones that you can't, don't. You know, it, it's that simple. We, we have options. There are people that are standing up. Because I understand that there are a lot of people that are just tired. But there are people that are standing up and answering the call to action to serve. And now we need you to answer the call and vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've been listening to Grassroots Ohio with Adrian Hood, Columbus City Council candidate for the people. In addition to our Friday 5 p.m. broadcast on W. In addition to our Friday 5:00 PM broadcast on WGRN LP, we air at 2:00 PM on Sundays at WCRS FM LP Columbus and at 4:00 PM at WEJPLP Wheeling, Mountville, West Virginia. You can find us on SoundCloud, Apple Podcasts, Spotify, YouTube, Facebook, and Instagram. Thanks for joining us. I'm trying to stop my recording. Where is it?